Okay. Good evening, everyone. Sorry you were fiddling over here to make sure all of our stuff is on mute. But tonight's our regular staff council member meeting, November 20th. Can we get a roll call, please? We're missing...
Mayor Didball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Buckland?
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Here.
Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
Thank you. And tonight, we're going to have Councilmember Buckland lead us in the invocation and if we can get Councilmember Cleveland to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Absolutely. I'm going to start this off just a little different than our normal invocation. We're going to have a moment of silence here in a little bit for the fire victims from the campfire in Paradise and in Southern California. But also sadly, on November 13th, we lost Mike Fitzgerald, who was a former Yuba City employee. He passed away at his home at the age of 60. Mike was with the city for 34 years and retired in June of 2016. He was a street maintenance supervisor, but we all knew him as Fitz and also known in the community by his neighbors as Santa Claus, who has now gone to the North Pole. He is survived by his loving family, his wife Kimber, his sons Chris and Rich, his brother Scott and his wife Kathy, his sister Karen and his father Richard, and his mother preceded him in death. And then also a young lady that meant a lot to this community, also was a volunteer, went down to Mexico and built homes, Liv Harrison, at the age of 19. Was murdered a couple days ago in Indiana. Her mother, Julie Robertson, survives her. We're going to miss these guys. And they provided a tremendous amount for our community. If you'll bow your heads as I pray. Almighty Father, first, let me say thank you on behalf of all those that are gathered here tonight. We're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for guidance and a clear vision so the efforts of staff and council would be of benefit to those who live and work in this community. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So tonight, we have presentations and proclamations. We have a proclamation for our city attorney, Tim Hayes, who is retiring. So if we can have Tim, please go ahead and step on up. And I would like to invite all of the council members up to the front as well.
Kind of like a hazing. It's called a hazing.
So Tim Hayes is retiring. Tim is leaving Yuba City after 22 years of service, dedicated service as a city attorney for the city of Yuba City. Tim came to Yuba Sutter area in 1980 after graduating with honors from La Jolla University School of Law. Tim worked in the Yuba County Council's office for 10 years and served as the Yuba County Council for three years. In 1990, Tim joined the law firm of McDowell, Holland &amp; Allen and became the city attorney for the city of Yuba City in 1996. Tim became a founding member of the law firm Martinez, Hayes, Hyatt &amp; Hill when McDowell, Holland &amp; Allen disbanded. As city attorney, Tim's sound and thoughtful advice has enabled the city to achieve success in numerous legally complex and challenging situations, significantly contributing to the city's vitality and quality of life for generations to come. During his career, Tim attended over 525 Yuba City Council meetings, approved 249 ordinances, advised 19 council members and mayors and three city managers. No wonder you're retiring. Tim's contributions to the city of Yuba City are too numerous to list. However, in the most recent years, Tim advised the council and staff on the following: the Lincoln East and Central City Pacific Plans and numerous zoning code and general plan updates, water and wastewater ordinances, storm water and flood management ordinances, ordinances to keep our community clean and safe, such as our shopping cart collection ordinance, dangerous and illegal fireworks ordinance, non-aggressive panhandling ordinance, social host ordinances for underage drinking, and the marijuana grow issues. Tim is devoted, is a devoted husband, father and grandfather, a lifelong Dodger fan, avid bicyclist, fly fisherman, and served as the youth basketball coach for many years. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of city council, city council of the city of Yuba City and on behalf of the entire staff, do hereby commend Tim Hayes for his outstanding performance and loyal service to the city and citizens of Yuba City. We hereby urge all citizens of Yuba City to join us in recognizing Tim for his contributions to Yuba City and wish him and his family the best in the future.
Thank you very much, Mayor and the council. Before I say a few words, and there'll just be a few words, I just want to acknowledge my wife, Mary, my son TJ, and my grandson, Timmy Hayes. I have one other son. He's down in school in Southern California and he could make it. I just want to say, I just feel really honored and privileged to have been the city attorney for this great city for almost 23 years. I thoroughly enjoyed the 23 years. I thank, I thank this council and the previous councils for keeping me around this long. I appreciate that. And I also want to thank the city employees who I've worked with over the years. I'll always remember the relationships and the friendships that we developed. You know, the city attorney and the city manager have a unique relationship and I was very fortunate just to have three excellent city managers in 23 years. That speaks to the stability of Yuba City in itself, I think. Jeff Foltz, I want to thank Jeff, Steve Jepson, and I especially want to thank my favorite city attorney, Steve Krager. What did I say?
City manager.
You're smart, but not that smart.
Thanks, Tim.
He's a lot smarter than I am. And I also want to give special thanks to Terrell Locke in the city manager's office for all of her help and support over the years. Thank you, Terrell, very much. And I guess you already heard, I'm going to be busy. I'm a fly fisherman. I love the bike ride. I'm kind of weird, my wife and I, we love to ride the hills and the mountains. And I have a grandson right here that I'll be spending a lot of time with. And again, thank you, thank you very much. And that's it. Okay?
Madam Mayor, before you let Tim go, I know that we have someone else here. Thank you. Very good.
So, Tim? You'll come back. You're not done yet. We have Laura Nicholson here from Assemblymember Gallagher and Senator Nielsen's office, who would like to present you.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of Assemblyman James Gallagher and Senator Jim Nielsen, it's my privilege tonight to present you with this joint certificate of recognition from the California State Legislature, commending you, congratulating you, welcoming you to enjoy your retirement. And it speaks to all of the things that Mayor Didball mentioned in your stellar career. And so, we thank you for that and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And, Tim, we won't hold the Dodgers against you.
All right. So we have a couple of public hearing items. We have the Underground Utility District 18-1, Bridge Street, State Route 99 to Second Street. Ben, hi. Mike?
Okay, here we go. We'll start up. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So the item before you is a public hearing to establish a Bridge Street, the Bridge Street Undergrounding District for the area from State Route 99 to Second Street. So a little background, PG&E allocates Electric Rule 20A funds through a program each year where they allocate different agencies' money to facilitate future undergrounding projects. With that, in 2016, city council recommended a priority list establishing Bridge Street for the priority project to use those funds. Currently, we have approximately $6.5 million in undergrounding credits, which is not enough due to inflation to do the whole corridor. But in order to move forward, staff is basically recommending to establish an undergrounding district so we can start the process to utilize those funds and start undergrounding phases of this district. And so, in order to establish an undergrounding district, the municipal code establishes a process where we put out a notice and then conduct a public hearing. And then if a resolution is passed, we take that resolution, enter into an agreement, and then work with PG&E to start the design and construction process. The fiscal cost for the projects is primarily Rule 20A funds that are held by PG&E, where they will coordinate the design and the construction, where also the city has some, some funds will cost for undergrounding services to private facilities and moving streetlights around. So, so with that, this is really just a step to establish this undergrounding district as, as, to move forward with it and then phase the projects so we, we get the most bang for our buck, with Phase 1 being the gray to Cooper and Phase 2 being the area from Shasta to Second Street. So when you're, you're coming into our new design corridor and then when you're coming into the city, you'll see those improvements done where they're undergrounding. And those two phases are really as far as the money is currently able to go. And so, we want to establish the whole area as a district, but we're going to phase the approach to use the money for those two phases first. But we want to establish the district for the entire corridor to give us the flexibility if we need to go one pole farther. And then if, if the funds come, we can go a little bit farther with that district. So with that, I recommend you conduct a public hearing and then approve the actions as presented.
Great, thank you, Ben. Bring it back to council for any questions at this time? No? Okay. So we'll go ahead and open it to the public for anyone who would like to speak on this item. Public hearing is now closed. Back to council for any questions, considerations, motions.
To the mayor.
Yes.
Ben, first, I'd like to commend you on the, on the process that we need to move forward on this rather quickly as the five phases of Bridge Street are not completed yet, but will hopefully soon be, be completed. The section between Plumas and Cooper is certainly of concern, and that is one that probably is going to take a while longer to be able to complete that with the undergrounding. But I also look at that in, in many aspects, and one of them is a safety aspect in getting the utilities moved and all of the overhead out of the way. Obviously, it wasn't overly apparent to us before we went into reconstruction of that phase of Bridge Street, but once that was done, the, the lines and the poles certainly became very apparent to all of us that that needed to be done. And whatever we can do to move forward and even obtain other credits in, in the process to be able to, to move that process forward, certainly, I know Live Oak has gone through a, a recent process with undergrounding in which they found additional credits that had expired, but they have to be given back to Live Oak. So that may be a process that we can look at in, in the future.
Absolutely. With this project, last year, Sutter County, we coordinated with Sutter County to obtain $900,000 in credits from their available portion that didn't go to Live Oak. And we'll continue to look forward to those opportunities. I've seen interesting stuff with different agencies have purchased credits for, cents on the dollar. So we'll continue to look at that to try to maximize.
I, I think that's the advantage that Live Oak has, has put out there to assist in their project also. So thank you for, for looking at that. With that, I'd move the staff's recommendation.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second, all in favor?
I think, I think we need a public hearing.
We already did that.
Did we? There's too many things going on. I apologize.
He's already retired.
You've already retired. You've got to finish this meeting.
Why am I, why am I here?
You've got to finish this meeting. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Great, thank you, Ben. Next, we have the John Sullivan Auto Dealership Expansion, the 950 Harder Parkway. Got Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Arnold Rodriguez Development Services Department. As, as Terrell's bringing up the, the presentation, the item before you can this evening consist of a handful of entitlements, and they're all land use entitlements. One of them is the General Plan Amendment to the city's general plan. One of them is a rezone application. The third is a development plan, and the, the fourth one's the environmental assessment for the three aforementioned land use entitlements. So the project itself, it's a two-acre expansion proposal by the John L. Sullivan Dealership. They'd like to expand two acres to the west. The property to the west is currently vacant, and this item was considered by the Planning Commission on September the 26th. And at that meeting, the Planning Commission is recommending approval. However, they are recommending the removal of one of the mitigation measures as recommended by city staff. And I'll get into that in a few slides here. So again, so the General Plan Amendment, the parcel itself is currently designated for office development. The applicant's proposing to modify that to regional commercial, its zoned office, they're proposing general commercial, and the development plan is simply needed because they're proposing to develop two acres of land that were previously undeveloped. So the two-acre site that the applicant is proposing to, to develop is currently part of a larger 23-acre site. That 28, the 23-acre site is, is part of the Calvary Christian Center. That piece of property was previously considered and approved for development with a relatively large religious facility, if I recall, about 85,000 square feet. If, if this item is approved this evening, John Sullivan would purchase the westernmost two acres. However, that would not impact parking. It does not impact the site layout. The only thing that it would impact are some soccer fields or the outfield of a baseball diamond and a small portion of a soccer field, and I'll identify that. So in terms of an aerial photo, here's the site itself, the John L. Sullivan Dealership, the existing site is identified right here. The red area is obviously proximate. It's not precise. However, that's roughly the two acres that they are looking at. And so, just a zoomed-in sight, to the north of it's obviously Colusa Highway, to the south is River Valley High School, and then there, there's the remaining 21 acres. So here's, and so I apologize if it's not extremely clear, but this is the site plan that we have on file that shows the, the approved site plan for, for the religious facility. You'll note that the parking flanks, the church on three different sides, and this is a softball diamond right here, kind of highlighted in, in gray. And then this is a soccer field. So again, so a portion of that would be removed, but again, it does not impact the facility itself. So at some point, the church will have to come back to the city, will amend the site plan. However, it doesn't really have any direct impacts to their facilities or their uses. It just impacts some, some of their open space. So the site itself, this is a John L. Sullivan existing dealership right here, to the north is pointing up. And so their expanded area is simply to accommodate an additional 400 cars for, for, for ultimate display. So the vehicles themselves, they obviously need the space, they're expanding, they're growing business, they're obviously doing very well in Yuba City. We, we like having them in Yuba City. We think they're a great partner, and one of the things they're looking at is simply for additional storage for their vehicles. Currently, they have two points, or they currently have one point of access, which is currently on Harder. As part of this, they are proposing a second point of access. However, the second point of access is going to be on Spirit Way. The second point is simply for, for, for their delivery trucks and to either enter to deliver vehicles or to pick up vehicles, so it's not for public access. So in response to the public notices that we sent, and at the Planning Commission hearing, we did have a couple of individuals that approached the city and said that there is obtrusive noise in the area that's been caused by a couple of the car dealerships in the area and some excessive lighting. And then also, previous to that, the city had received some concerns specifically about the parking of delivery trucks on Harder. We've addressed these issues with John L. Sullivan at the meeting on September the 26th. He approached the podium and he indicated that he would take care of that. And to this date, we have not received a single complaint or concern from any of the community members. So I would, I'm going to speculate that he addressed them exactly how he said he would. The only real item of concern for city staff for this project is that there was historically a, a relatively large Valley Oak tree on the property along the western boundary. Some of the reports that we received was that it was approximately 48 inches in width. Depending on who you ask, I've heard that it was as old as 160 years old. I've also heard that it was 120 years old, so I'm not too sure exactly. However, any tree that's 48 inches in diameter is a relatively old tree. City staff, the John L. Sullivan Dealership did contact staff in October of 2017. We requested that they commission an arborist report shortly thereafter, probably a month or so went by, and then we received a notification that the tree had been removed. So at that point, staff was taken aback a little bit because we had not received a copy of the arborist report and we hadn't, up to that point, we didn't have direct contact with the Sullivan Dealership. So again, the tree was removed, the arborist report, that's included in your staff report, if I recall, it's dated November the 13th of 2017, that arborist report didn't know that the tree was damaged at the root, and therefore, they removed it. So the, the city does have a general plan policy that identifies the preservation of Valley Oak trees. And so because of that, city staff is recommending mitigation for the removal of that tree. So the tree, again, is 48 inches in diameter, at a drip line of about 40 feet in diameter. And again, the tree was moved in late 2017. Unfortunately, we don't have the specific date because I'm unaware of when it was removed, but we know it was the, the latter part of 2017. This is an older aerial photograph, simply highlighted with the yellow arrow, is the Valley Oak tree, which, which, when the Sullivan Dealership was initially approved, they had protected the Valley Oak tree. And there it is. That photo was probably taken a few months prior to it being removed. And so this is the previous site plan, and I simply want to identify that that shows the curb line right there in terms of the tree being protected. So one of the things that city staff did is we reached out to various cities across the state, and we discussed different options in terms of how they appraise oak trees. One of the common methods for appraising oak trees was employing the Council of Tree and Landscapeur Appraisals Guidebook. When we ran the numbers, the mitigation came out to slightly more than $17,000 for the mitigation of that tree. One of the things that city staff is proposing is if the applicant prefers not to pay that, then we would recommend that the applicant, that they plant an, an equivalent number in terms of dollar valuation of oak trees onsite or else, or a combination of that, so they could pay a portion of the fee and they can plant some of the trees, or if they like, they would simply take the money, give it to the city. And we've committed to, to using those dollars to plant oak trees along the new park that's planned, right, well, just to the north, probably about 500 feet to the north, adjacent to the, to the water tower or the water tanks. At the Planning Commission meeting, after fairly extensive discussion, the Planning Commission recommended 620 to not include the mitigation, and that was primarily because the applicant, per the applicant, it was diseased, it was damaged, and it was a, a, a health and safety issue. And they felt that there was an immediate need because a, a couple of branch, I'm not sure if it was a branch or a relatively large branch, had fallen and it damaged, I believe, if I recall, two vehicles of customers, and it nearly hit a customer. And so because of that, they felt that there was an immediate threat, so they did remove the tree. So with that being said, just a couple of things about mitigation. Any mitigation does have to be roughly proportional to the project itself, and we cannot mitigate to, to, or the goal being that you're only mitigating to pre-project conditions, you're not adding additional mitigation to go pre-project mitigation plus more than that. We felt a staff that the, that the proposed mitigation is appropriate. It's a universally accepted standard for mitigation for tree appraisals, and that's why we went with the figure. So with that being said, we incorporated that into the document. So staff this evening is recommending approval or adoption of the environmental assessment, which does include mitigation measures. And we're also recommending that the city council approve the General Plan Amendment as proposed by John L. Sullivan. We are recommending that, or we're introducing an ordinance to rezon the approximately two-acre site, and that the council this evening waived the first reading. We would come back at a future city council meeting for the second reading, and we're also recommending that you approve the resolution to approve the development plan. So with that being said, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. And I'll bring it back to the council for any questions at this time. Mr. Rodriguez?
Arnoldo, is there any mention in ordinance or in the other agencies that have the same policy for trees that are going to die anyway? Is there any accommodation for that? That seems to make a lot of sense to me.
You know, I, I have not studied exhaustively a lot of other ordinances, and so I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Is there mention in ours?
No, there is not mention in ours. Ours is not housed in our zoning ordinance, rather, it's housed in our general plan.
General plan?
Yeah.
Okay. And the standard by which we came to the figure of 17,000 or better, what was where?
That was employing...
On your slide, I missed it.
Okay. I'm just going to back up here. So we employed the guide to plant appraisals by the Council of Tree and Landscapeur and landscape appraisers, and there's a formula. We simply filled in the formula based on the information that we had available to us.
And the heritage oaks, that's the word this applies to in Yuba City, is that correct?
And this would be a Valley Oak specifically?
A Valley Oak? So do we have a tally or an inventory of trees that this would apply to in the city? Any idea how many?
We do not.
Do not? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
To the mayor. So, Arnoldo, how many trees is $17,000 worth? How many trees is Mr. Sullivan going to have to purchase to cover one tree?
I think it largely depends on the size of the tree. If it's a five-gallon tree, if it's a 24-inch box tree, if it's a five-gallon tree, 36-inch box tree. Valley Oak trees, they're, they're relatively expensive once they started getting into the 36-inch box trees. I know at one point, we had reached out, and I apologize for not having it in front of me, but we had reached out to Home Depot, and it was a handful of trees. I can't recall if it was five or six, but those are some of the larger trees. But then you include transport, someone actually asked to...
Right, I understand.
So I wasn't including that. I was simply looking at the cost of the tree. So obviously, there were, there would obviously be some additional costs that we would obviously take into consideration. The goal of the mitigation is obviously not to pen, it's not to punish, so the dealership, we understand that according to them, the tree was diseased. However, we're simply following general plan policies that states that we should try to preserve them. However, we're simply following general plan policies that states that we should try to preserve them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No, okay, so at this time I'll go ahead and open it for a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak on this item may come. And if you can state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Malmon Toy with Borges Architectural Group, we're the architectural firm, uh, for do this. Uh, Mr. Sullivan apologized, he can't be here tonight, uh, he did attend the planning commission, uh, meeting that we have. And I guess I just want to point a clarification, at the meeting, uh, Mr. Sullivan did speak to the tree, the tree was diseased. Uh, it did fall and damaged some cars, uh, almost hit an employee and a customer. So as Ms., and I'm going to kind of rephrase some of the things Mr. Sullivan said at the planning commission meeting. He probably should have notified the city first, which he did not, um, but it was a liability issue. And as he stated, if that had fallen on somebody or damaged anything, it's not the city that's liable, it was him. So he made a decision to have the tree removed. Um, at the commission and I guess I'm looking for clarification because at the, the planning commission meeting, staff did recommend. The mitigation measures, Mr. Sullivan spoke about that, it was unanimous vote that there would be no mitigation measures, that it was well within his right. To protect his property and his employees, et cetera. So is, is now the recommendation to reintroduce the mitigation measures? I guess is the question I have, uh, after the planning commission. Um, Mr. Sullivan has agreed per the city landscape ordinances that we will plant trees along Spirit Drive. Uh, as part of the two acre expansion, uh, I believe all the way to harder, up to the edge of where his two acres are, uh, per the city guidelines. Um, so anyway, I guess that's all I, I just wanted to point a clarification as to if that's being reintroduced now as a measure for Mr. Sullivan after the planning commission.
Um, Aranda, can, can you go ahead and speak on that to ju- just for clarity?
On projects that are presented before the city council on, on, um. When items are not appealed, so in this case, because the project does include a development plan, a rezone and a general plan amendment. The, the appropriate avenue, it's that the legislative body takes action on that. And at the same time, you would be acting on the environmental assessment. If however, this project was simply development plan and the purview or the approval body would be the planning commission. This project would not be coming before the planning commission or, or the city council for consideration this evening. However, so it's not that we're reintroducing it, the planning commission was simply a recommendation to the city council in terms of how to handle this.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? No? Go ahead and close it, uh, close the public hearing, bring it back to council for any further discussion.
Madam Mayor, may I just ask a question of Mr. Rodriguez for clarification? So I, I understand the answer to the question the gentleman asked is, is, is yes. Yeah, so that's the short answer. Um, with regard to the recommendation before the council this evening. Does, as presented, uh, is it addressing the question of the mitigation fee? Or no, that's separate and apart and they need to address that separately?
Correct.
Okay, so, so that your council understands that. So the recommendation that you have before you is essentially, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, what was presented or recommended by your planning commission. Uh, not having the mitigation fee in there. Um, and just so I believe why Mr. Rodriguez has emphasized this as part of his charge as your development services director and mine as your city manager. Is to faithfully implement your general plan. It's your constitution for the growth of the community. And so, um, when something like this comes about, obviously we reflect on it as staff as, you know. We need to figure a good procedure for the future, um, so that this doesn't happen again. Um, because it's an awkward situation where a private enterprise, uh, is trying to do something to protect their property. Uh, and we're trying to do something to protect, protect heritage trees in the community. Um, to, because it's part of any community's identity, having, um, trees that are a hundred, a hundred and forty years old. Now, don't get me wrong, a community can make the decision and say, it's not, um, of, of community-wide concern. Uh, and it is an, in, in, pardon me, individual right of a property owner and could have it removed from a general plan. But the fact that it's in there requires us to bring it forward to you and that's why it's here before you tonight. Uh, so, so why is it coming back to you? It's because of that matter, okay? Thank you.
So Steve, a follow-up to that, I would ask, I, I was on the planning commission when Sullivan's project came originally. Um, I, and obviously I'm not going to remember all of those years back, but, um, I am wondering in that original, um, report. If that was documented to indicate that the removal of these trees would need to come through the city for that approval and so forth. Prior to any removal, I, you know, I'm not going to remember all of the details from the original project, so.
So the staff report, if I recall, was in twenty fourteen.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the staff report was silent relative to the tree. The only place that I could find documentation regarding the tree was this site plan, so this is a, uh, a, a, a zoomed-in area. Of the only place that I can find discussion of the tree, where it identified it. So the red area there was obviously my markings just to identify the area. And so the only place is there's some language there, however, the environmental document and the conditions of approval are silent relative to the tree. Um, and there was no discussion, um, again, so the only place where I could find it is in this area here.
Any other questions, concerns, motion?
Yes.
Through the mayor, um. You know, um, Mr. Sullivan, uh. He was concerned about his vehicles, wa- employees welfare and customers welfare. Uh, he took upon himself to, uh, take it down, to take the tree down. But then he did get an arbor, arborist report and it did say that the tree was diseased. So, um, myself personally, it's just me speaking, we have four other council members here. Um, I don't think Mr. Sullivan should be punished for seventeen thousand dollars. He's willing to plant some trees from point A to point B, uh, for beautification. Um, uh, we could maybe come to some different agreement here or something like that, but I don't think Mr. Sullivan should be punished for seventeen thousand dollars. When he's adding on to his building and, and bringing money and, and bringing folks here and helping the community selling, selling cars and trucks in our community. So that's just me speaking, but, uh, maybe we can do something about that. And yeah, he's going to plant trees, I don't think it has to be seventeen thousand dollars worth. He's going to plant it, like you said, from point A to point B.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Through the mayor.
Mm-hmm.
Just my comment, um, that the Sullivan, uh, dealership has expanded tremendously since they've been in our community. Currently parking, uh, vehicles, primarily pickup trucks, um, down on Highway ninety-nine and Reed Road, uh, far offsite. And a not a very secure location, given the overall location, uh, of that adjacent to the highway. So I, I think this project needs to move forward. Um, I believe we can come to some type of an agreement, um, in which, uh, some oak trees can be replaced on property. Uh, for beautification and also as part of the mitigation, I would agree with the comments that, um, seventeen thousand dollars worth. Probably, uh. It is a, is a little high, uh, on my, uh, estimation. But whatever they're going to do is going to cost them regardless. And depending on the type of trees that they're going to put in, I would just recommend that, that, uh, whatever those trees are, that, that, uh, a portion of those. Be replaced with, uh, valley oak and, and, uh, we just try to move forward in some type of a, an agreement. Um, that would make it, uh, palatable for both the city and for the dealership itself.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I just want to echo the same sentence that the previous two, uh, councilmen have, uh, mentioned that, uh. Seventeen thousand dollars plus seems to me to be a lot of money. They made good faith effort to protect not only their property, but the, the safety of their employees and the public. Uh, the tree was going to die anyway and, uh, so many documents before this, I think it is a wonderful learning opportunity for us to, uh. Ensure this doesn't happen again and perhaps we can tighten up the language in our general plan to address this exact circumstance to where. Um, we're, what we'll be really saving if the thing's already circling the drain. So the root of the problem. Thank you very much. Is that we need to get to the, uh, the, uh, update that general plan to, to address that exception, which is a very, um. Uh, it's ama- not really amazing, just it's interesting that it wasn't there before because that could, can happen, it's realistic. Uh, uh, Sullivan is, uh, fully willing and already has stepped up, they're going to be a good neighbor and volunteered to plant some heritage, or some, some oak trees on, on their property. They get to enjoy the benefit, they're paying for them, it's, it, that's reasonable to me too. How do we get there from here, though, navigating through all these, these processes and the general plan and whatnot, but that's the way, uh, that's my opinion. Um, which I think is pretty much the consensus here for all of us.
Yeah, a- and that was why I was asking about the planning commission, the original project, because if we're being, being silent about it from the beginning. Then here we are in a situation, so either we need to be very, um, straightforward with it. And it needs to be brought up at the point when the projects first come up, that these are things that we will look at very closely. And if we're going to be silent about it, this is, this is where we're going to be with it, so.
Yeah, um, in terms of a condition, if I am, can, may simply make a recommendation would, um. Rather than, or, um. Stipulating the fee of the seventeen thousand dollars plus, then I would simply recommend that the mitigation language reflect, um, that. Some of the trees that are required to be planted simply be valley oak trees and we just leave it at that. And, um, what we can do is that we can work with John L. Sullivan, we can work with their landscape architect, just to make sure that they're appropriately spaced. Uh, just make sure that they have the opportunity to grow. Um, because if you plant them in a small planter, obviously valley oaks grow extremely large and we simply want to, um, you can just give them that option. So, so that I think would be appropriate, um, and at the same time, w- we're still collectively as a community, staying true to the general plan. And simply seeing that the mitigation dollar or value is not necessarily a check submitted to the city, rather it simply in lieu, they're providing the trees onsite. And I, I obviously think that that would be appropriate.
Arnaldo, uh, excuse me, Tim Hayes. Uh, I'm just looking at the.
He woke up.
Mitigation language and it, it lists as an al- alternative.
He had to plant them.
In lieu of the dollar amount, the alternative states, uh, as an alternative, the applicant may plant a comparable amount of oak trees. On the subject site, so we al- already have that language, I don't know how we're going to quantify what comparable amount of oak trees are. Um, but, but my point is that language is, is already there as an alternative, uh, mi- mitigation. In lieu of the, of the dollar amount, the, the mitigation would be to require the applicant to, to plant a comparable amount of oak trees. And so I think, uh, staff can use that language and, and work with Sullivan and, and come to an agreement on that. So I, I think, I think we've already got the language there.
Yeah.
Uh, based on what the, what I'm hearing the council saying.
Yes.
The only thing I would say on that, it, and I agree completely with you, Tim, is that if it comes to less than seventeen thousand dollars, so be it. We don't want to plant a tree for the sake of planting a tree, as long as they have the proper and the, the room to grow and the space to grow, even if it's two or three, so be it. Um, we don't need to hold them to that number just on principle.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the council's made it clear, we don't want to be holding to the dollar amount, rather the language just says a comparable amount of oak trees.
Right.
And we'll leave that to, to staff and, and, and Mr. Sullivan to, to work out.
Now on that, Tim, what's the definition of a cur- comparable amount of oak trees?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we're talking a hundred, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and sixty years.
I think, I think staff and Mr. Sullivan can, can reach an agreement on that, Manny.
Okay, so would it be up to council to? Make some type of price limit, I mean, because I mean, it could, uh, it could still be seventeen thousand dollars for.
If Mr. Sullivan's dissatisfied, I'm sure he'll be back here before you.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm sure we don't want to see that happen.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll work it out.
Thank you, thank you, Steve, thank you, Tim.
All right, any other questions or discussion or motion?
Now, how are we going to do that motion, Tim, for, uh?
We've, we've got the, the language is already there in the, in the recommendation, I don't think we need to change any language. Staff has received direction, we're going to utilize the alternative mitigation instead of the dollar amount.
Okay.
We're going to adopt the recommendations as stated.
Okay.
I don't think we need to make any changes.
Yeah, because there's no dollar amount in the, in.
The, uh. The way I interpreted a comparable amount of oak trees was seventeen thousand dollars worth of oak trees, that's the way I read that. So, uh, I don't know if that's the case or not, who wrote that?
I, um.
The way I read it.
Yeah, I can, um, on council's direction, I can go in, commodify that.
Okay.
Um, and because it's such a small modification, that item would not have to come back to the city council. And I'm confident that between city staff, um, his representative and John L. Sullivan, can, we can come to an agreement.
Okay.
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 Does that help clear things?
I sure hope so.
Okay. All right.
I hope everybody's happy.
So unless there's further discussion, do we have a motion?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how to word it. How'd you word, how do we get word that again, Tim, please?
Just, just adopt staff's recommendations, we're not changing any language, just adopt the, the recommendations as presented in the staff report.
As recommended, because it's in here. And then he'll change.
I'll just say move to approve staff's recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Ben, you're back.
All right, next we have an award for the Civic Center Field Improvement Projects and we got Ben.
All right, I'm back, I have a nice, um, project here to discuss. And so, uh, the item before you is in regards to moving forward with the construction of the Civic Center Field Improvements. It's a, uh, construction project that council authorized us to move forward with. By then September, we went out to bid, uh, mid-October and we received four bids to, um, improve this, this location, which is directly across the street from us here. Um, where you could see, uh, for a field, for an usable field that needs a little maintenance. And so in coordination wi- with the police department improvements, um, we're taking the soil that's being excavated from those improvements. We're proposing to regrade the, the site, so to eliminate the gopher holes, get the, the water to drain. Improve the irrigation system so adequately, um, keeps it green. Right now, when we inherited, when we purchased it from the church, it, the irrigation was designed off a large ag well. And so when that converted to city water and a city well, the, um, the irrigation systems never worked, um, really quite, quite efficiently. And so with this, we're going to regrade it, put up new fences and put in irrigation that's going to keep it, um, nice and green. And then it's, it's, um, identified as an important project for staff with the loss, with the potential loss of the fields along Gray Avenue. There with, uh, with the unified school districts, um, uh, proposed plans. We're going to lose that as a facility and so the Parks and Recreation Department is looking forward to use that. So we recently opened bids, we received four bids. Delta Landscaping Incorporated came in under engineer's estimate, which was nice, they're a local contractor. And so with that, we have two hundred and two thousand and change with contingency and project management, we're looking at a total project cost of approximately two hundred and thirty thousand. In order to fund that, we'd like to use unallocated development impact fee dollars and transfer that into our improvements and billions of ground account. And move forward with the contract. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ben. Bring it back, uh, to council for any questions, discussion? Or motion? No?
I thought Stan was going to do something.
I'll make a recommendation, uh, for staff's recommendation or approval, uh, award the contract. Uh, authorize city manager to execute, execute the contract and authorize the supplemental appropriation.
Second it.
You have a second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you, Ben.
Great, thanks.
Oh, you're on the next one too, Sanborn, uh, Road Improvements Project Award.
Getting through them here. Okay, so this item is in regards to the Sanborn Road Improvement Project to move forward with construction. In the past, we've programmed money i- in the CIP to put, um, drainage dollars and road improvement dollars to, to Sanborn. dollars to Sanborn Road, and then also, in coordination with Fragment, we've obtained a Blue Skies grant to enhance, to, for pedestrian improvement project down for that stretch, there's a large pedestrian use from, from the nearby neighborhood to the temple, and, and the road is really in poor quality with poor drainage, it was constructed in the county before curbs and gutter sidewalk, and, and over the years, the houses are, are basically lower than the road, and so we have a, we have a drainage problem on the, on the east side, where that water really sits in there and kinda floods that out, it's a sharp drop-off down to this orchard, making it tough to walk and bicycle with, with a narrow roadway, and the road is really just, it's an older road and poor quality. And so with council direction, with the program funds, staff has been working with the, and this is an interesting project, because half of the, the west half is the county, the east half is the city, and so we've been in coordination with the county to partner, to put together a project that works for both of us. And so through the design, we've, we've come up with a design to stay in budget, kinda as a phased approach, where we basically overlay the road and widen the east side, so we're gonna have, we're gonna have an east area where we have a large bike, and, and kind of a joint-use bike pedestrian area, and then a parking area with, with a graded swell, and then on the west side, we're gonna extend the west shoulder out another five foot, and, and then put a, a grid-based shoulder in there, in order to meet budget. We looked at curb, gutter, and sidewalk options, and they're really just too expensive, in order to facilitate, with the drainage improvements, it would have to go in to facilitate the, the drainage system. And so with that, we've, we've come up with a project that was bid, that we bid it with a bid and an add alternate, and so the, the base bid was for the city's portion, so from the center line to the east, which would be the overlay of, of the northbound lane on, on Sanborn Road, widen that shoulder area and to provide for that grading, and then the add alternate portion of the bid was the county's portion, what was the west side of the road, that widening for the bike path, and then the improvements along Bo, Bog Road on the north, which would put the shoulder. And so with this project, the bids came in, it was nice to see the bids, All American Construction, which is a local contractor, came in as the low bid, just under engineer's estimate, we've broken out the county's portion and the city's portion, with the city being approximately two hundred and fifty thousand, the add alternate being a hundred and twenty-four thousand, what we're asking for approval is that council give us authorization to construct the entire project with assurance, once staff receives assurance from the county, that they will pay us back the hundred and twenty-four thousand. And so the city's gonna contract the entire project with your approval, but we're gonna make sure, we're only gonna contract that out if the county gives us the hundred and twenty-four thousand. If the county decides not to move forward with that project, then we'll just do our east half, a portion in, in, in contract for the base bid amount. And so I wanna make that clear, that basically, the total project is four hundred and thirty-one thousand after contingency and construction, we're gonna break that out with the county, and make sure that we get payment back. If they don't decide to move forward, then we just move forward, the way the recommendation is written is that we just move forward with the base bid for our portion. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions about that, and let's see if I got anything else, it's a nice little project, and, and through discussions with the Development Services Director Neil Hay, it sounds like they're gonna move forward with it, they just need to have, get board, get board approval, and then we'll contact the contractor and get going. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
To the mayor. Hey, Ben, on the bid here, the paperwork I have in front of me, the county, you have up there one twenty-four ninety, and the piece of paper I have in front of me is one twenty-four five hundred.
Manny, I'll make sure, I'll make sure that we, we review and that we coordinate to get the exact amount.
Okay.
Yeah, I have one twenty-four, ninety-four dollars and fifty cents, so it looks like we, we rounded.
You rechanged it.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem.
So, and with that, we're gonna work with the county to make sure they pay their fair share of the contingency and the, the project management, and so that number from the county will, will work, so it's gonna be plus or minus, is like I just said, we were gonna get approval, that we're gonna make sure that we get paid back for their portion, but the exact amount is gonna be based on the exact amount of asphalt that's put down at that bid amount, and then with, with any contingency or construction management out, out of that. So when we get that assurance from the county, it's gonna be approval for the base, for those bid item amounts, and then the actual payment back will be based on the actual physical asphalt that gets put on the ground.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or motion?
To the mayor?
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Sanbor, on the Sanborn Road Improvement Project to All American Construction of Live Oak, for the total amount of three seventy-four five hundred, with the authorized city manager to execute the contract behalf of the city.
Do we have a second?
Are we gonna add the contingency?
Oh, and, yeah, the alternate bid? There's no contingency on this.
The total project cost is gonna be four hundred and thirty-one-
Okay.
-thousand, using existing CIP accounts, if we make recommendations to A and B, I think we'll be in-
Okay, well, staff's recommendation of A and B, we'll just do that, make it that easy.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ben. All right, so we will do public communication, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting, public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called, public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time, comments that are controversial, items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of, of the group. Do we have any written requests? None received. Okay, so if anybody would like to speak at this time, yes. If you can, please state your name and address for the record.
See? I check my turn page.
Tom Tucker, Harder Packing Company, thirteen twenty-one Harder Parkway, Uba City, California. I hadn't planned to speak anything, but this tree issue just brought something to my mind. Recently, I don't know if the council members know, but I would say forty to fifty, huge pine trees were removed by PG&E from the back of Home Depot and Walmart. Now, those were a condition of their development, is that developer now going to have to replant some other type of landscapes? I know PG&E wanted, they were beautiful trees, forty, forty feet high, and it just kinda looked like a little park when you went through there, even though it's, it's a gravelled dirtway, is other landscaping gonna be replaced there? And I probably would, Arnaldo's not here, I would probably like to hear council's input on that, when utility removes trees, is the landowner responsible for replacing that landscape that was a condition of development?
And, and what we could, it looks like Ben is, is ready to respond, and if Ben is, doesn't have the information, we're okay with taking the notes down and making sure that staff get back to you regarding that.
Madam Mayor, Arnolda is in the room?
Yeah.
So if, between Ben and Arnolda, they should be able to answer that question if the council asks that question of them, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, definitely, we receive notice when PG&E start removing the trees, you know, this is one of those kind of unfortunate circumstances that we're working through, it's private property, and PG&E has utility easements, so they don't give us, they don't give the city notification necessarily, and so when we find out about it, when two-thirds of the trees are cut down, like, you know, we, we definitely look to PG&E, into the property owners and say, hey, what's going on? And so with that, we coordinated with PG&E, told them, we need to have better coordination when there's anything that affects commercial properties that, that's, that per the development plan, or any requirements that have requirement for trees, that there's a plan in place before they just start whacking the trees down. And so we're working to, to put a more, a little more pressure on PG&E that they coordinate with us, and then they, at the same time, we understand PG&Es need that, they plant redwood trees directly under transmission lines, and so the, there's no pruning of a redwood tree that really is gonna work well, and so is the wrong tree for that location. And so the city is working, I know with code enforcement, we've talked with code enforcement a little bit, and with the property owner now, to facilitate what type of landscaping is gonna go back, what we'd like to see in the future, and what we discussed with PG&E on my side, is that that's coordinated before the trees get removed, so.
And so in response to the removal of the trees, so as Ben stated, he's been working through PG&E, through the Code Enforcement Division, we've actually reached out to the property owners, to simply state that they're gonna be responsible for replanning some of the trees, the exact location and the species, we're gonna have to work through those details.
Okay, great, thank you. Did that help? Yeah.
Yeah.
Landscaping.
Yeah, and the exact location, those are the details that we'll have to work out, just to make sure that we're not having the same problem fifteen years from today.
Right, right, thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
And through the mayor, I'd like to indulge the council with an opportunity to address publicly and memorialize a set of events that I think is important to move forward, and I'd like to do it at this time, if time allows, it should only take about three to five minutes to go through.
Okay.
All right. In two thousand and eleven, the Regional Waste Management Authority began looking at a transfer facility, or a transfer facility on the Sutter County side of the river. It was through a process in which the evaluation was made, Recology was involved in that process, Sloan Vasquez was involved in that process, and it was ultimately decided that the cost of providing a transfer facility and operating it for a twenty-year period of time would probably be cost prohibitive. Also, at that very same time, a company based here in Uba City, that's been based here for approximately forty-two years, in two thousand and eleven began a process, and they wrote a letter to the city of Uba City, indicating that they wished to expand their operations on the south end of Uba City for a transfer facility. That was in two thousand and eleven. As we've moved forward, many things have taken place, and there were a number of special meetings as we looked forward to our renegotiating our solid waste collection service agreement with Recology. Those occurred in two thousand and sixteen. At that very same time, there was some discussion of a transfer facility. In September of two thousand and sixteen, numerous members of this council attended a meeting in Long Beach, California, hosted by Recology, and there were city staff also there. There wasn't a Brown Act violation, as we were all separated out with different members. All of that was memorialized in the FPPC seven hundred reporting for that year by all of our council members. Moving forward, on January the tenth of two thousand and seventeen, I attended a, and very publicly, attended a basketball game in Sacramento. This was attended by council members from throughout our region, to include Elk Grove, Citrus Heights, Sacramento, and the Downtown Business Partners in Sacramento. That, too, was memorialized in a seven hundred form, as a gift of two hundred and fifty dollars, the cost of that ticket. There was no, no discussions there about anything other than who Republic Services was, who they provided services to, but there's been accusations over a period of time that are false, and they go all the way back into two thousand and seventeen. Moving forward, on the twenty-fourth of January, solid waste service options were set to expire with our collection services agreement on September thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. We employed Sloan Vasquez and McAfee to negotiate the current, with the current service provider, Recology of Sutter, and come up with some type of competitive procurement process in which we were told during that, that the timeline provided would not allow for negotiations, if those failed, then going into a procurement process. Moving forward, to September the fifth of two thousand and seventeen, in a regular meeting, we agreed to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Sloan Vasquez McAfee for sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty, or five hundred and seventy dollars to conduct a competitive procurement process for solid waste and recycling services. We also approved a supplemental appropriation of seventy-three thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the solid waste franchise fees. On November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, at a regular meeting here, the competitive procurement of solid waste recycling organic material collection services, we approved the content and release of a request for proposals for franchise collection services and the associated draft collection services franchise agreement. There was a lot of discussion as we went forward as to how that would take place, and what the, the construction of that agreement would look like. On November the twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen, in a regular meeting, the competitive procurement of solid waste recycling organic materials collection services was a topic right here. Considered amendments to the, to the content for the request for proposals for franchise collection services and the associated draft collection services franchise agreement. It included the approval of requests for proposals franchise collection services as amended, which gave some priorities to the retention of employees of Recology. In March sixth of two thousand and eighteen, a regular meeting here at City Hall, the competitive procurement of solid waste recycling organic materials was yet another topic. We entered into negotiations with the two top proposers out of the five that had entered in, it was Recology of Sutter and Republic Services, and they needed to bring back their best and final offers to the city. Negotiations occurred, and on five fifteen of two thousand and eighteen, once again the same topic, and the final negotiations for solid waste recycling and organic materials collection services agreement with Recology of Sutter was decided that that would go forward. Negotiations occurred over months' time, and on ten-two, that was awarded to Recology. We are in the last year of an agreement with Recology that is set to expire on September the thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, with a new contract on October first, two thousand and nineteen, that will extend for ten years with two five-year extensions possible. The reason that I wanna memorialize this is because there have been accusations made, businesses affected, that should not be affected by comments made in public. There are raw feelings in our community, and when people start calling people corrupt, and they ought to be in jail, I, I take great exception, especially when people come up and point at me, and when I ask them where that came from- And when I ask them where that came from, it goes back to two sources, and it was during a campaign. And I will hold, as a community member, those accountable for those comments. If I had it to do all over again, the process that we went through, starting back in two thousand and eleven, when Dave Vaughn stood right at that microphone and said, on December the tenth of two thousand and eleven, your contract with Recology of Sutter expires in twenty-one days at midnight. We're no longer obligated to pick up your trash. They were supposed to have negotiated a contract, and that was to have been in place by June thirtieth of two thousand and eleven, and they pushed it off and pushed it off. To come in and put pressure on a city council. I have no beef with Recology, they're a great company, and I've said that time and time again. But what I have a complaint with is the way that it is transmitted into the public. They're a great company, they are the provider for us for twenty years, and I will tell you straight up, we need to get over whatever it is in this community and get on with the business of this community, providing for businesses that want to grow and expand. I have one more meeting as a city council member. I'm not bitter. In fact, I'm kinda looking forward to some time off, about twenty to thirty hours a week that might be available to me now. So I'm kinda looking forward to that. But the accountability will be there, and it has to be there. Because to move forward and attack businesses is not what this council's about, it's not what this city is about, and it's not what our staff is about. And I thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to take those five minutes, I think it was six and a half, but allowing me to take those, those minutes so we wouldn't do this on the fourth of December. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else like to speak? Nope? Okay. All right, we will go to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on motion, on the motion unless members of council, staff, or public request any, any particular item to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for any individual action. So looking at consent calendar, do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. And our general items, um, we have Spencer, who's gonna give us a presentation of our investment report, quarter ended September thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Good evening, Mayor Diball, members of the council, my name is Spencer Morrison, I'm your city treasurer. Tonight I bring before you the treasurer's quarterly investment report for the quarter ending September thirty, two thousand and eighteen. The first quarter portfolio, portfolio value is, has a market value of one hundred and twenty-four point two million. About ninety-eight point six million of that is city-held, and the remainder is in trust because of bond covenants. Eighteen and a half million net decrease over last quarter, as you can see from the list here, that's mostly, um, I'm sorry, that's an increase over last quarter, and it's mostly because of the two thousand and eighteen wastewater revenue bond proceeds of twenty-three point six million. We also had eighteen point two million in payroll, um, pension prepayment of three point four million, and flood control projects and bridge, Fifth Street Bridge project, construction projects as well, and sales tax receipt of about three point three million. There were nine investments that matured or sold with an average yield of one point three three percent, and eight were purchased to replace them at two point eight four percent. On the left part of this pie chart is the cash and life, you can see that they make up about a little less than half, about forty-six percent. The rest of the portfolio is invested in agency bonds, U.S. Treasury bonds, corporate bonds, commercial paper, CDs, and a few assessment district bonds that the city holds. This maturity distribution reflects a conservative portfolio that favors anticipated slight increases in interest rates and modest economic growth in the coming quarters, as well as large construction-related cash flows from the flood control project and Fifth Street Bridge project. Are there any questions?
Short and sweet.
Very short and sweet.
Any questions for Spencer?
Good work Spencer.
Thank you very much.
So that is for our files, thank you. Next, we have the approval for the call to artists, it's our Yuba Sitter, uh, city water project, tower project. Sorry, I have a cold from all the smoke and stuff, so.
Yes, it looks like it's gonna get better tomorrow, hopefully. All right, so this is another great community project in that, that the mayor has helped take the lead with for, and so over the last couple of months, we've, there's been um discussion about maintenance to the Yuba City Water Tower along Plumas Street, and then also with past discussions about how we could revive, enhance the sign. And so in an endeavor to partner with the community arts to, to continue to enrich our community with different arts around town, the, the mayor coordinated with staff and with the Arts Council to partner up to see if there was a potential win-win where we could get ideas and local artists' input that might be able to provide that maintenance while also enriching the community. So with that, David Reed with the Yuba Sitter Arts Council is here to give us a presentation on the Call to Artists.
Thank you.
Great, thank you Ben. Mayor Diball, city council, um, and as Ben pointed out, this is a passion project for Mayor Diball, and we very much appreciate it for coming to us and, and bringing this forward. I see these large iconic structures around town, and I'm, you know, I'm actively thinking about arts projects, and so when it actually becomes a possibility, I get very, very excited. We love our, we love our water tower. I say that collectively as a member of the Yuba Sitter community, although I live in Yuba County, but um, we, we were approached and have had several meetings with staff, and, and Ben and his team have been great stewards of this project throughout. It's, it's kind of evolved, it started with conversations about a, a hand-painted mural, perhaps a, a mural design created by an artist and then turned into a vinyl wrap, going that route. I know staff looked into safety issues related to it, in fact, I think Chief Daley's had a hand in, in this process, looking at the, the uh, foot rail up there and the scaffolding, and so there's some things we know we can't do, but, but still trying to open it up to, to some new ideas. It's kind of evolved to become not just a, a base for a mural at the top, and we've got some examples we'll show you, but of course, this is just one of an ongoing project with the city, you're all familiar with our utility box project that, again, we worked with Ben and his team to, to bring to life, and, and those have been a big hit. But we thought that, you know, turning it into more of a, an art project on a grander scale, not just, again, a base for a mural, or the, as Councilman Buckland, I think, mentioned last time I was here, the, was it the Pigeon Disco back in the day? I've remembered that, I like that, yeah. But the way these things work, if you're not familiar with the process, and, and Yuba Sitter, the Yuba Sitter Regional Arts Council as the local affiliate for the California Arts Council, who provide about a third of our funding, a hundred thousand plus a year, there, there's a process, and we have access to some resources as a result of that affiliation. So you draft what's called a call to artists, so we're on our second iteration, it's evolved from, again, just the mural project to something more, more all-inclusive, um, we've refined the language, we want it to be open, an open call to California-based artists, we've gotten responses internationally to some of our projects, like the Live of Murals that we're, we're still in the process of painting and creating. So the initial process would, would be to get these proposals, and they're just design proposals. In this case, we're not looking for a finished product, so we don't need construction estimates or any of the equipment rental and the infrastructure it would take to, to do something. We're just looking for concepts from artists across the state of what, you know, reimagining that structure and what it, what it might look like. From that field of submissions that we receive, once they're qualified and vetted, and make sure they meet all the criteria that we bake into the Call to Artist, um, we'll review them, uh, we'll have a committee formed by staff and, and council to review, and then choose one or several finalists. We've had as many as three finalists in some of these projects over the years. We would then ask that we're able to pay those, those finalists, two, three, four, whatever it might be, an honorarium of five hundred dollars, this is sort of a common practice, to take their submitted presentation and refine it per criteria that we provide. Hey, we like this, but we want it, you know, a different color, take your rendering and, you know, move this element in a different, whatever it may be, uh, that the committee requests. And we're all familiar with the structure, I know this is, you know, one possible approach with some metal paneling, um, and what some other communities have done. I submitted some other kind of off-the-wall ideas that didn't make the final cut, but, you know, artists, I'm sure, will far exceed what, what I could have imagined. That one, the second in from the right's kind of, kind of a wild and crazy approach. I don't know what that was originally, maybe it was built that way, but, but you get the general idea. So fun project, very excited to be part of it, and, and that's why we're here, and, and hopefully you'll see the benefit and approve that honorarium for the artists, for those finalists.
Great, thank you David.
Any questions?
Bring this back to council for any comments, discussion?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
So David, I, I think this is, it's a great vision project. The history of that tower, um, not just being a, as a water supply, but, and before, before Pete, and before Mark, uh, was the fire chief, uh, at the base of that was Yuba City Fire Department. It was built into that structure, and we have, actually have photographs of that. For police services, there was a red light on the top of it, and when, and the, the police dispatch center was at the old city hall on, on Highway twenty at Plumas, when there was a call for service, they would just flip the switch, the red light would go on, and the, and the police officer would go to a call box and call in to find out where the call was at.
Kinda like the Batman thing in Gotham City, yeah.
So you're, see, you've got the vision already.
I like it.
You know, it's moving that direction, so, you know, a fire truck that looks like a Batmobile and, and, you know, everything else is, is kind of the, a, a good way to start looking at, at some of these things.
Right.
I like, I like the vision.
Any other question? Yes.
Dave, after we do this beautiful artwork on the tower, are we gonna have it lit up so it could be seen at night? Is that part of the project?
Depends, uh, it's not specified in the call, that would depend on the artist's vision, if they come back with a lighting component, in addition to whatever sculptural elements they might imagine, it could, we haven't said, be sure to include lighting, uh, we could certainly do that if, if we wanted to modify the call to make sure it's visible at night.
Okay. Thank you Dave.
After the mayor. Hey Dave, um, the intent for the initial proposal, is that something in verbally, or do you, would you, are you looking for some sort of a prototype initially?
They'll, they'll submit renderings.
Renderings, okay.
Uh, some, some artists will submit a freehand, uh, you know, they're particularly gifted that way, others, uh, more and more, we're seeing computer renderings.
Okay.
Where they cut and paste elements, I mean, that sounds crude, it's much more sophisticated, you, you see a final product.
Graphic design.
Pretty cool, yeah. So we'll have a, pictures to show.
Any other questions? I just want to say thank you to the staff, thank you for, David, for, um, this was a vision I actually had on a Sunday night. I, I'm sorry Diana, I called you on your day off, but I did make my phone calls to staff first to kind of get a consensus on what do you think about this idea, and it was pretty much, um, very much liked by everyone, um, and then I placed the call with you, and I, I was very excited that you were excited about it, um, so I'm glad to see this moving forward. Thank you everyone for the work that you've put in, um, with the meetings and the conversations, the discussion, and, and it's nice to see that things are moving forward with it, so thank you very much.
Thanks for including us.
All right, with that, um, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you. Next, we have professional services agreement with West Yost Associates for the design of our pressure surge relief facility for the water distribution system, we have Mandy.
Mayor Diball and the council members, good evening. In this item, I will discuss the need for the pressure surge relief facility for the water system, and will make a recommendation toward the professional services agreement to design the facility. A brief history, uh, description of the water treatment system. It consists of a water treatment plant which was built in nineteen sixty-nine, and then it has gone through multiple upgrades since then, and currently it has thirty-six million gallons per day capacity. And then we have a water distribution system to take the water from the water treatment plant to the customers, and it consists of two hundred and seventy-five miles of water distribution lines, and we have total six water storage sites, booster stations, including at the water plant, which has capacity of over twenty million gallons. And we have approximately nineteen thousand service connections throughout the city's service area. And this picture shows the, shows the map of the collection system, and then picture to the right side shows the aerial picture of the water treatment plant. So the need of the pressure surge relief facility. So sometimes we get some unexpected power outages from P G N E, they act, occur only for a few seconds only, because of those generally, the power outages creates a pressure fluctuation in the distribution system, for example, when the pumps are running, they're maintaining and keeping the pressure in the distribution system, when the power goes out, all those systems goes down, before the generators takes about thirty, thirty seconds to a minute before they get started up and start all the pumps. So then that causes the significant drop in pressures, followed by the high amount of pressures in the pressure lines, that creates the, what it's called hydraulic, hydraulic hammers, and, and that leads to those variations, and the pressure leads to the leaks in the pipes. And those leaks, we need to address those leaks, those are expensive to address, and they also cause water losses as well. And the city has conducted the water loss program, and those, these leaks, this problem was found out through that, that, that study. So in addition, it can activate the fire alarms, which requires emergency services response. We are also required to maintain a minimum of twenty P S I pressure in the system, in the water distribution system, but the pressure drops associated with the power outages, the pressure easily drops below twenty P S I pressure. So bid this, the proposed system, um, West Yost, at council's approval, did a hydraulic analysis to see what type of system we need and what, where we need it, and they did the hydraulic analysis, and they identified two locations at the water treatment plant and also at the hotter storage facility side to build the surge relief facilities. The proposed system addresses the pressure fluctuations related to the power outages, and protects, and protects the city's infrastructure by reducing negative impacts on the water distribution system. This reduces, the, the proposed system reduces the number of leaks in the system, and ultimately it reduces the cost to repair the leaks and reduces the water loss because of the leaks. it reduces the cost to repair the leaks and reduces the water loss because of the leaks, which is, in the long run, this system will pay itself back and, and also help to protect our, our water infrastructure. So with the council's approval, the next steps, next phases of this project will be design and competitive bidding, and then, and the construction startup of the system, that will, that will be it. So the fiscal impact of this project, the design portion, is $359,995 from the adopted, adopted water system C I P budget, and $329,995 is the design contract, and staff recommends $30,000 additional contingency for that contract. And with that, I would like to move forward with recommendation to award a professional services agreement to West Coast Associates of Davis, California, and the amount of $329,995 plus $30,000 in contingency to prepare the design documents for the pressure surge relief facility for the water distribution system, with the finding that it is in the best interest of the city.
Thank you.
And I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Mandy, is this a open discharge system, or is it going to be potentially designed as a closed retention system?
It is a closed system. It will be in parallel with the existing system. When the power goes out, before the generators kicks in, it provides, keeps, maintains the minimum pressure that we require to keep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Just a comment through the mayor. Having had experience with large plants, processing plants in the past, I've seen what Water Hammer can do to an absolutely perfectly good system, completely blow out an elbow that is not defective. It just, there's so much pressure that it just literally bends over the threading or whatever that's holding it together, it just blows it apart. So I can understand the problem with the water leakages after Water Hammer, especially of this type of a system, so I think it's necessary for us to move forward, and thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Through the mayor. Mandy, I could see the treatment plant, you know, being very, very important, but we only picked one storage tank, is that, is, what about the others? That's just the main concern, shouldn't we have them at all the storage tanks?
We, the West Coast Associates did a hydraulic analysis, and they came up with different alternatives, and we have our hydraulic model for the entire system, and they can, they plugged in different pumps, different tanks of the different sites, and for the existing customers at this point in time, these are the two locations which are, which needs, which are wanted to move forward with.
So then we will, in the future, continue on to get the rest of the, the storage tanks?
As the city develops, we have the new developments coming, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And with that, I'll make staff's recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Approve it? I'd like to.
I would like to make a clarification that it is going to be required only for the new tanks, not existing tank locations.
Right, correct.
Are we still good with the motion?
Yep.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you. Mandy, you're still up. We have the professional services agreement with West Coast Associates for the wastewater system master plan update and the biosolids and organic waste management analysis, alternative analysis, yeah.
Okay, in this item, I will discuss the need for the wastewater system master plan update as well as biosolids and organic waste management alternative analysis, and will make a recommendation to the, to award a professional services agreement to, to prepare those A brief description on the wastewater system consists of a wastewater treatment facility and wastewater collection system. The wastewater treatment facility was constructed in 1972, with multiple upgrades since then, and currently we have 18, 18 point, 10 point, sorry, 10.5 million gallons per meter capacity. And the wastewater collection system consists of approximately 200 miles of silver mine, with 17 lip stations throughout the, the collection system, and we serve approximately 15,000 customers, service connections. And both our wastewater facility and the collection system are subject to regulatory requirements, and we have the separate permits from the state for, to operate both of the This is a map of the collection system, and to the right side, the aerial picture of the wastewater treatment facility. So the need of the wastewater master plan, the last wastewater master plan was completed in 2006, and it has recommended several improvements. The recommended projects have either been completed, or are under construction, or are under design based on their need and priority. So therefore, the 2006 master plan served its purpose in the past 12 years really well. During the past 12 years, several state regulations have changed specifically related to the water conservation, which, which impacts the flows to the wastewater system. A new wastewater master plan will serve city's wastewater infrastructure planning guide for the next 10 to 12 years. It is pretty typical for all the agencies to update the wastewater and water master plans every 10 to 15 years, so that's what we're doing here. The master plan will provide information to the, to calculate the new anticipated flow projections in the future, and it will provide information to, about the future anticipated regulatory requirements, the what type of requirements are going to be on the horizon, and how are we going to prepare, how are we going to prepare ourselves to meet those requirements, and it will also provide the infrastructure needs for the new developments, as well as the improvements needs for the existing infrastructure, it's getting old. The wastewater service connection fees, it will give information to calculate the wastewater connection fees for the new customers, and it will also help provide information to, to do the future wastewater rates for the existing customers. And it creates a capital improvement program for the next 10 to 20 years, so that we can work on those improvements like we completed in, in the past 12 years. And another component of this study is alternative analysis of S B 1383 requirements from the state, and it is about how to dispose of our biosolids generated at the wastewater facility. They're going to be in effect in the next few years, and also as well as the organic waste from the city. Another important aspect in, in the planning, in, in the master plan is that we will have the, all the projects needed on the master plan, that will put us in a position where we can proactively apply for the grants and loans, which saves our customers money and keep, help to keep the rates low. For example, in the last eight years, we were successful in obtaining $6 million, $6 million in grants from the state, as well as additional $10 million in the low interest rates. So, so this, this master plan document is essential for us to, to stay proactive on that. Fiscal impact of this, to prepare these documents, is $603,052, which includes $55,000 contingency. It has been already included in the adopted city's C I P budget for this project. With that, I would like to make a recommend, recommendation to award a professional services agreement to West Coast Associated, Associates of Davis, California, and the amount of $5,000, 500, 500,048 and $52 plus $55,000 contingency to prepare the wastewater master plan upgrade and biosolids and organic waste management alternative analysis, with the finding that it is in the best interest of the city.
Great, thank you, Mandy. Any questions for Mandy for discussion or a motion?
You did it so well, Mandy, you even said the recommendation word by word. So, so I will just move your recommendation if there's no other discussion.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you, Mandy.
Thank you.
Next, we have Diana, approval of the Highway 20 corridor master plan design project concepts.
Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you tonight is approval of the Highway 20 corridor master plan design concepts. So to give you some background, city council has prioritized improving the Highway 20 corridor with the goal to bring new economic energy to the area. The city has previously received two $100,000 grants through the C A C O G community design program. The first grant was used to prepare the Highway 20 Better Street Design Guide, which that guide recommended that the city enhance landscaping, green the street by planting street trees along with other plants in the medians, create an edge and buffer between the sidewalks and vehicle travel lanes, install wayfinding signage, and manage vehicle access by consolidating driveways. The second grant helped to improve the median between Stafford Way and Clark Avenue, and I'm happy to report that we have a third $100,000 grant coming from C A C O G to help us implement this project. So as the next step in the Highway 20 revitalization strategy, in December 2016, council awarded a contract to Melton Design Group to create a landscape corridor and wayfinding signage concept plan. I want to add to this, at one point, we had prepared a grant application for the competitive community design grant through C A C O G. Some of the feedback that we received from Caltrans was that we actually needed to establish a master plan for the Highway 20 corridor, that we'd be more competitive if we had a cohesive plan that showed that there had been community input, and that we had put some thought into what that corridor was going to look like. And so based upon, you know, that recommendation from not only the previous study, but then also Caltrans, again, we contracted with Melton Design Group to create the corridor. I'm going to skip ahead for a minute before we get into the presentation by Greg Melton, but we've already put elements of this plan into implementation. And so for instance, I talked about the Highway 20 median, you know, this has been constructed. Also, right now, under construction, McDonald's on Highway 20, Arnaldo, the Development Services Director, was able to take this plan and use it as a guide in terms of working with McDonald's. You know, we're going to have landscaping in this front area, which is going to greatly improve the look of McDonald's. And then also in regard to Dutch Brothers, with the Dutch Brothers project, they're now going to have landscaping here between, you know, fronting the property. And so this is really a, a great guide to be able to help staff to, as projects come in, properties redevelop, to really look at this, okay, what are our opportunities to consolidate driveways, what are opportunities to improve the landscaping, not that everything's going to be built exactly as this guide shows, but it's a great reference point for us. So with that, I would like to introduce Greg Melton with Melton Design Group, and he's going to give us a presentation on the plan.
Great, thank you, Diana. Good evening, Greg Melton, and I guess what I want to say is thank you, this has been a real fun project, creating this image. Obviously, your brand here in front of you has, someone did a lot of work really capturing Yuba City, and so we use that and others to really try to capture some of the different locations and the gateway for the arrival into, into town. So with that, we'll just kind of roll through the plan here, you'll see this again in a minute. Boom. There we go. All right. So the corridor itself, as you can see, is just the highway from 99 to the river, and that's the study area that we're working on right now, and the grants that Diana and the city's getting for the improvements. There it is. So to do this, we really wanted to identify a lot of the existing conditions, and this is primarily for the whole Highway 20 corridor with the different drive accesses to all the commercial areas that was part of this. We wanted to look at the safety of that and where, where we could minimize access points to, and make it safety, make it safer to drive and to have less access points to Highway 20. So we went through an existing condition, and you can read that on your own spare time, it gets detailed. These identifications, photos, helped us study the area, plus look at the different intersections where we saw more accidents than others, which helped us identify the, all the driveways, which are the green and orange dots, orange being driveways that are maybe less than desirable or overdone, so. We went through the whole site there, and they've been identified, and quickly, back, back on that, real quick, we will be looking at this, and as Arnaldo and the planning and everybody has been using this right now, as new development occurs, this is when these driveways will be looked at. So not just randomly saying we're going to remove a driveway, but in addition to a use permit or a zone change. So diving into the design approach, there are a lot of opportunities we have, there really is not a big arrival from the north or from the east coming into the city, so that's where this, obviously, this section of road focused, and we captured the, again, the crate and some of your other signage, and there's your water tower that is now going to get a new facelift also. So we took all this into consideration, plus, you know, some of the key elements in, in this, this, the Sutter Buttes, the rolling hills, the agriculture, and really tied it together into our design. We also looked at some, some of our public meetings, people brought up, hey, the crop duster's been a very big part of our community, the agriculture, so these are things that came from our meetings that we presented, and then people elaborated on, so these are just some images. So we focused on two main gateways at the 9920 and at the 20 over the Feather River Bridge, those are our two main focus points, and then for the wayfinding, we identified some of the main cross streets where we would be using a lot of the kiosks and other signage that unifies the whole project. Also, with the bridge street improvement occurring, we wanted the east-west corridors to be similar, so when you're driving east-west, the medians will be very similar in view, so initially, people aren't going to get that, but once you do realize, hey, what street am I, oh, this must be an east-west corridor, it's got this type of landscaping, trees, lighting, et cetera, so little subliminal action going on there. So here is the intersection at the 99 corridor, and this is the view you have coming from the north and looking east. The, the new Pollo Loco is over here, so we are, we are not blocking any of their new signage, but we really wanted to capture the Sutter Buttes, the Tullys, the Ducks, and of course, the signage of Yuba City along some type of agricultural landscape. So this is the theme that's developed, and with this theme, we've, we've included that in, in all the corners or something like that. This is the primary sign on this intersection, so when you're coming from the north, you will see this. And then as you're coming from the south, from the east off of the bridge, this is an option we looked at is capturing the water tower, which you can't see from a lot of places in town, and bring a, a scaled version of that to the east side of the bridge. So when you start, you know, hundreds and hundreds of feet back, this bridge will be visible, I mean, this tank will be visible, and we'll, we'll be able to capture your logo. We included also some wildlife steel cutouts onto the wall, onto the tower, so it had a little bit more character, and, and again, represented the river as we are right on the river on that, on that end. So between this and the, this one, those are turning your primary gateways on the north and the east. This is looking northeast at the mall site, standing in the middle of the intersection, and again, we have the rolling hills, we have some cutouts that represent the community, the branding, the identity, et cetera. And again, we're, we're using a steel material with different perforations to capture this, so something very low maintenance, something that's not painted, it'll be treated in a way that long-term maintenance will not be required, so you'll have to come back on occasion, but it won't have to be repainted all the time. So we wanted to capture a material that also fit into the area. So again, duplicating the landscape, so the whole intersection would look very similar. This is the Sutter Buttes and the rolling hills looking to the northwest, and again, this, and then looking towards the gas station, the southwest. We wanted to make sure that things were still very visible, but we still used a lot of the repetitive elements. When we went to the wayfinding, obviously, the Sutter Buttes are a key element in this, so with our signage, we wanted to capture similar materials, but also that same branding. So now, as you go down the Highway 20 corridor, we would have this different wayfinding signage. we would have this different wayfinding signage, kiosks and maps at the key intersections where we'd have pedestrians. And then wanted to incorporate a monument sign for the commercial areas. Some, in some cases, we have multiple commercials that could be handled by one sign instead of having a sign every building. So we wanted to give the commercial world and the tenants and the retailers something that they could build and put their signage on, their logos, but have an overall theme that matches the whole project. So we went through that, street signs. And then this is some signage that's kind of new to the world of wayfinding. It's actually on the pavement or on the ground. So if you're driving on Highway 80 right now, you'll see all these Highway 80, Business 80, I-5 arrows. So actually, on the pavement showing up. So we had picked the proper elements we wanted to identify, you know, downtown Pluma Street, whatever it may be, or the emergency ones with police and fire, and identify those either on the pavement or the sidewalk. So just another approach to all of that. Streetscapes, we, sections, we basically have two sections going up and down Highway 20, one with a narrow median and one with a wider median. The parkways on the sides are about the same throughout. But those are kind of the two sections that you'll see. In some areas, we have 10 to 12 feet, in other areas, we have four. So where there's four feet, you're not going to see a tree. And we don't have room right now at the current lane configuration to make those wider. If something was to change in that realm, then Caltrans, obviously, would be making a big change in the whole street. So those are the sections. The typical hardscape, as Diana mentioned, we wanted to start creating a safety area between the road and the sidewalk. So we wanted to create parkway strips. So this is part of the whole safety of the pedestrian. So this shows parkway strips between the sidewalk and the road. And in some places where buildings abut right up against the sidewalk, we won't be able to do that. We'll have to have the sidewalk adjacent to the curb and gutter. So it doesn't happen with the safe sidewalk everywhere, but where we can, we'll incorporate it throughout. The new tree planting landscape. You've seen what's gone on in bridge. It's going to be very similar to that going down the center median. And then we'll have a different canopy and a different tree in the parkway strips. Again, we'll be taking into consideration the retail signage, tenant signs, pruning the trees up, so when you are in your vehicles, you'll be able to see under. And we know when a tree goes in the ground, you can't quite do that. But it takes a few years, and once the tree grows up a little bit, we'll be able to see under that, and the tenants will have their signs visible. There is the median that's gone in currently on Highway 20. The different trees was the Chinese pistachio and the small little gem magnolia, if you were wondering. So at this point, you know, the master plan will be, if adopted tonight, moved to a final product after a final review from the staff. And at that point, we'll have a completed master plan to go after more grant money and to implement as we needed it or as planning needs with new development is occurring at McDonald's and those other elements. So that kind of wraps up my presentation. Do you guys have any questions or want to see anything else?
Thank you. Any questions, further discussion? No? Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I do have. When we're looking at the intersection of 99 and 20, we hope that in short 20 years.
Short period of time.
We would hope 10, that that intersection would see a massive change with structure to move the vehicles in non-conflict. And so, some of that gateway appearance, just in my estimation, needs to probably be reflective in value or relocation possibilities that wouldn't be astronomical to do that. And then, and then when we look at some of the retail that's currently there, and I think it's all in lease configurations on the west side, that's all Caltrans property.
Right.
So investing in something that they may just come along and say, you know, it's gone, might be something that we need to look at. I mean, overall, the concept is great. It's just where the allocation of resources would go.
Sure, and I think this, with this design, we wouldn't be losing these products. You know, the steel isn't going to be a 50-foot single sheet of steel. It'll be broken down into manageable, constructible sites that are bolted onto footings. So in this case, if we ended up with some type of overpass and connection, these elements will be able to be uprooted, new footings put in different locations, and then replanted, you know, as they fit into the new design. And hopefully, with the new design, we can work these in.
I think with that in mind, I think the plan is probably a good move-forward product for our city.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments, discussion?
Yeah, I'm gonna just a comment, basically based upon relationships with Caltrans. Some of us that have been at this a while know the intricacies and time that it takes to develop plans with a state agency. And while this, the community has said in the past they would like it all cleaned up on that corridor. And while we have made progress, a lot of the times, Caltrans' interest was taken away by other major projects throughout the state and in the region. So finally, we're able to get at a point to where we have a plan that, as far as we know, they're somewhat satisfied with the basic concepts and that the plans will at least be able to proceed without too many problems in the next year or so. And that actually, we can have the, I'm just going to say it, ugly bushes and turnouts removed finally, and put into something that the citizens can say, yeah, we like that look. But it has been a challenging relationship process to get to this point. So fantastic to staff finally getting it here. And I'm looking forward to this actually being put into construction in the next few years. Thank you.
Any comments?
Diana, I just want to say thank you for working on the master plan. I think master plans are really important for the visionary of the city. And then to apply for grants, they're very pertinent to the information. So when you're applying for the grant, it obviously shows that we're not doing a hagpaj stuff. You know, they see a plan. So that's why the master plans are so important to get out there. So thank you for all the work put into this to help move it forward.
Yeah, there was a lot of staff involvement, so Ben, Arnaldo. And then also, we did have a couple of public workshops where we did get input from adjacent property owners. So it was really great to get their input. And we actually implemented some of their ideas into the plan.
Yeah, so thank you very much for that effort. Okay, do we have an approval, a motion?
I've moved to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you. All right, next, we have the Yuba City Five-Year Residential Building Guide, Darren.
Good evening, Mayor Diboll and council members. It's a pleasure to be before you this evening to talk about our housing strategy. This is an item that was brought to the City Council back in September, and I gave a pretty long presentation related to our housing strategy. I can go through that at, I'll give a much abbreviated presentation. If you have any other questions, I can do that. In short, at one time back in 2004, we built 990, or I shouldn't say we, the city issued 991 residential permits. Now, we're in the 40 units a year range. And there's some constraints that I just want to kind of highlight. Number one is the lack of improved parcels. Many of the parcels throughout the Sacramento region are being built on parcels of land that the entitlements were entitled pre-recession. So we call those pre-recession lots. And most of those lots in the Sacramento region, not only were entitled, but they had infrastructure installed with them. So curb, gutter, sidewalk, sewer, water, and either the developers that are developing on them have that written off to like zero on their books, or they paid somewhere between 20 to 30 cents on the dollar of what the true value of those improvements are. So instead of the real value of being somewhere in the $150,000 range, they're much, you know, down, well under $50,000 or well below. Another issue within Yuba City is we have few large parcels. Our developments within our city, we get really excited when someone comes in with 30 acres. In most cities, it's hundreds. Or we even get excited with 50 or 100 acres. But in most cases, a lot of our, our land here is much smaller. Throughout the Sacramento region, it's much larger. Another one is the national home builders don't know Yuba City. They're just not here. And that industry has changed significantly since the last recession, and many people have moved on. And then finally, Yuba City used to have its own construction firms here. And when I mean that, that hasn't changed. We still have our own construction firms, but they used to only work here within the Yuba Sutter Region. And so, there used to be a cost difference between what a person was charging here for construction versus somewhere outside the area. Now, our contractors are moving, and with all of the devastation with the multiple fires, Redding Campfire and over in Napa, Santa Rosa, thank you. That's really just exasperated the issue, and people are willing to travel. So those are a little bit of the constraints, but it really doesn't matter. It's where we are today, which is we're not seeing residential housing built. And that's why we brought forward a guide that the council directed us to do. And there's one goal, increase new housing starts. How can we do that? We have a plan. In the plan, it basically provides, it's very short, eight pages, provides all the information for a home builder to come in, know where the properties are that are currently entitled. Why is that important? I don't know a single one of our properties that are entitled that are currently listed by a broker, not one. So we need to make sure and get that into the hands of the home builder so that they can know that, you know, we're open for business, and here's a property that has an entitlement. Two, if someone's just not, if someone's just interested in property, we can provide them information on where our infrastructure is. They can very clearly see, you know, which landowners they need to go hit up. And really, a third one is, and it's something that we talked about the last meeting, which is promoting that Yuba City's open for business. We have demonstrated day in and day out that we can process projects quicker than any other jurisdiction within the entire Sacramento region. And we've heard that day in and day out from the developers that come into town that we work with. Do we make mistakes? Absolutely. We're always looking to try to make improvements. So that's what's in our Future Foundation's plan. The part I want to talk about a little bit is this extra document, which is our action plan. What are we going to do? So since the meeting that we held in September, we held a quarterly, builders, developers, engineers, anyone that's in the development industry within the Yuba Sutter Region, we invited them to a lunch. We gave them the same presentation we gave the City Council, and we received feedback, and we included it into our plan. Next, we are working with First American Title to put together a roadshow in, basically, South Placer County. That's where the majority of the home builders are. We have great connections with our local home builders. But we need, and we want them to succeed, and we want to help them out. But at the same time, we need to bring in additional ones to come in here. So that's part of our action plan. It's identifying infill projects. As we've mentioned, we will be, if the council approves this, we'd be preparing actual building plans that someone could come into the city, and we would say, here you go. You can use these building plans to develop a home within our city. That's a savings of somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000, a full set of construction plans. And it's, and where did that come, came from? That came from our Development Services Director, Arnaldo, who's meeting with property owners on code enforcement issues that say, it's just too expensive for me to tear down the home. And here's some of the issues. And they, and he asked the question, how about if we presented you a full set of plans? They said, great. So we're working, we'll identify if the council approves this, local folks, to help us come up with a full set of plans. Impact fees. We have told every single local developer and Sacramento region developer that here's what our impact fees are. If you have a piece of property, you want to build, new housing starts on, come sit down with staff, and we'll work through those issues. We would need to come back to the City Council for approval if we were to reduce our impact fees. I can tell you tomorrow, I have a meeting with one of our local home builders on a project that he's considering. And I know one of the issues is going to be impact fees, and he's waiting to see the outcome of this council meeting. At least in the short term as relates to impact fees, we hope to bring back in December an item to not index our impact fees. Every January, I believe it's January, our impact fees are indexed by consumer price indexed. So we'll at least bring that. And then development really is a, it's a formula. Construction cost, land cost, impact fee cost, there's a variety of different costs, and then price. And there are some concerns that if you lower, if you lower impact, if you don't have a home builder that's out there that's looking to build, and you lower impact fees, does that just increase the price of the land? Because it's all a formula. That being said, we'll bring back to council whatever the home builders tell us that they need as we're, as we continue to talk with them. And like I mentioned, tomorrow, we'll be meeting with one of them. A sequence, streamlining, how can we better improve our process to make it quicker? Time is money to developers. And they want to see surety that they can get a project moving forward when they make an investment, especially now as the market has softened in the Sacramento region. Couple other things is how do we encourage accessory dwelling units? Just the other day in the paper, there was an article about Yuba County adopting a CFD program. We actually already have one of those, they did not. And we will be bringing back every single one that any of the residential developers want to do so that they can use CFDs to help make the development cost work for them to build homes of all different types of housing, right? This isn't just a $500,000 home that's being built in the northwest side of Yuba City, but how can we have possible starter homes, tiny homes, whatever it might be? Looking at setback requirements, this is a big issue that could take a lot of time. And so, as we meet with the developers, whatever they tell us, if they say, hey, this is what the market right now wants, which is, you know, smaller lots, then we'll come back and bring that, and we think we can go forward very quickly. And then finally, how do we continue to go after grant funding and look for infrastructure improvements to help assist the development? All of this comes together as a result of a team of staff at the city. And I want to recognize, we have Dennis Cook, who's assisted with this, Diana Langley, Sharon from Public Works, and Arnaldo all put a great work, a great amount of effort into this so that we can be ready and show that our residential developers that we're here, we're open for business, and we want to see them succeed. And at the same time, we have to balance, balance the needs of the community of building the infrastructure that are needed as a result of new, of new residents coming to our city. So I can answer any questions that you might have. I do have other details that I went over the first time. But that is our action plan, and the staff recommendation is to adopt the Future Foundation and the action plan.
Great, thank you, Darren. Bring it back to council for any questions, discussion, or approval.
Just a question for Darren. Darren, looking at kind of the new model of use, the millennial usage of properties.
Yeah.
They're less concerned for a, for property that they have to take care of. They would prefer to be in multiple, you know, multiple sequenced dwellings with connected duplex, triplexes, things like that. In this whole program, is that something that we're looking at is to be more attractive to millennials? I mean, price-wise, we're there at times. There is a big sag in the market currently. And when I say big, it's talking to local realtors. We're sitting at about a 4% sag right now. And it's probably seasonal, they're hoping. And some of it's driven by interest rates, but, and then looking... And some of it's driven by interest rates, but, and then looking, looking at, you know, the smaller footprint, multiple narrowly connected structures.
Absolutely.
Okay. Because that's, I mean, I, if, if we're going to be attractive and, and try to get folks to, to move here, and especially retain some, you know, the millennials and, and get them, whether they're working here or commuting, I think that, that we just have to have those plans and, and available for them.
We've reached out recently to a builder in Sacramento that, that is doing work on Broadway, which has an interesting product. The national home builders are not looking for that attached product, but some of the Sacramento developers definitely are. And we've, I've already had one meeting with one of them, and both the mayor and I were on a trip with four, one of the Ryan and Bartis grandchildren, and they're very interested.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion, approval?
Moved to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Before you go into business from the council, may I ask, just for a moment, to make a comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Arnaldo Rodriguez, who was just mentioned as part of Darren's presentation, has been with the city for three and a half years. And this is the last time he will be appearing before your council. He's due congratulations as he's going on to become the city manager for the city of Madera. And three and a half years here is not normal. So it's not normal that I would take the time to mention this, because our executive team members have an average tenure of over 15 years with the city. And so we are hoping for the same for Arnaldo. But when he got the call to essentially go back home to the community in which he was raised and be the city manager there, it's very much a compliment to him. I will qualify that, though, by saying his three and a half years is really the equivalent of about seven years of work time, because he has a tendency to put extra effort, 200% of effort into his job. And our city is better off as a result of it. I know your council knows this. I know you appreciate him, and I just felt for the record, the community would be best to know that they had a, a person here who certainly left, has, is leaving Yuba City better than he found it. So thank you, Arnaldo. Thank you, council.
Thank you. And I just have to say, in, in those three and a half years, you know, I was on the panel when we were interviewing, and, and you were by far just the perfect candidate, and obviously for the position. And you uplifted your entire family ASAP and moved everyone here. Your daughter just graduated from River Valley High School, and so, you know, you made every effort to make sure that this became home for not only you, your family, and, and you did a phenomenal job with the city. And you reached out to residents, you made sure that everybody was connected. We have letters from folks that would come to the front desk and were just treated with utmost respect, and all information was handled quickly and great care. And we have letters that vouch for that. So thank you very much for the three and a half years. We wish you, you would stay, but you know what? That offer to go back to the city and be the city manager is phenomenal, very, very well-deserved. All right, so let's go to our city council reports. Councilmember Buckland.
Nice thing about Arnaldo leaving, the city's gonna save a little bit of power money from the, the late night burn in here. So we'll miss you. It's been a remarkable three and a half years, and I personally am, am grateful for you having come here when you did. And, and the, you know, you replaced an absence that was, that was present at that point and filled it quickly and with vigor that I don't think any of us have ever seen, and we'd certainly like to emulate that in our own personal lives. So you're a man of energy. Last Thursday, I attended the, my last SACOG general board meeting, and as we're moving forward down there, or as SACOG moves forward, with the metric, the update to the Metropolitan Transportation Plan that's due in, in full in 2020. But that's also, contains the, the SCS also, which is the Sustainable Community Strategy. So as that moves forward, I, I know that there are capable replacements that go down. I will say that, that SACOG is like drinking out of a fire hydrant, not out of a fire hose. You go down there and, and it, it takes a little while to figure out what's going on. And so I, I value whoever the assignee is on a permanent basis, being able to help kind of gear them up a little bit and give them some direction on, on what they can expect. Something that was done for me when Leslie McBride left and said, here you go, and threw me into the fire. So with, with that, I've attended a couple ribbon cuttings, you know, in the, in the last month. But right now, my hat's off to John Nicoletti. He's in the process of firing up 550 turkeys to build a feed, fire personnel, and, and some of the, of the sheltered individuals, and also some of the folks that are in rest homes locally and all the way up to, to Chico. And we were asked, a group of us were asked to step in, and currently, we took 50 of those turkeys, and we're trying to process those out the next day over here at the Veterans Center. So looking forward to probably a night or night and a half of no sleep once again. And, but I, I know that it will go to a wonderful use in, in providing at least a, a warm meal for some of the folks that just don't have that opportunity with all of the fires and, and displacement that's going on. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Cardoza.
Also, Arnaldo, want to thank you also. Remember, our morning meetings every Monday, where I'd come ask for advice and lead me down the right path, working with, dealing with some, how do we say it, exciting people? Huh? You know, I want to thank you and wish you great luck and have fun, get, go back home. I'm gonna start off with meetings, last few weeks, attended the Regional Housing Authority, By County Homeless Services, the UBC Unified School District's Government Liaison Meeting, LAFCO, Sutter Beach Flood Control, Gil Sizer, and the Planning Commission, chamber events, a couple ribbon cuttings also, had a business after hours for the Diabetes Support Resource Center. And it was all-state insurance ribbon cutting, Landon Sons. For a community event, I did coffee with a cop. We attended Starbucks on Highway 20. Chief Landon and I were making coffee and having fun, and it's not the easiest job I thought it would be. When you go in there and get a cup of coffee, it's very tense and exciting. Attended the Seventh Annual Kettle Kickoff for the Salvation Army, the Pies and Ryes Harvest Festival by Serophimus, David Holycross's Seventh Annual Donation Station, and Chili Cookoff, that was fun. This morning, we passed out 100 Thanksgiving dinners for the less unfortunate with the Quanis Clubs, Early Risers, Noon and Evening Club. Visited the Animal Services folks today. And the last seven days, I've been down at the fairgrounds helping the evacuees from the Butte County Fire. I've been serving breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and whatever goodies they tell me to do, I'm stepping up and helping the folks there. They think I'm the boss, and I told them I'm just here helping. I, I always have to point to the person that's in charge, they always come to me, so I'm kind of having fun with that. And then on closing, I want to give special thank you to our community, the Yuba Sutter community, our, all our churches, restaurants, our community services, organizations, service groups, and all the volunteers, because for this, because all this couldn't be done without the folks and everybody in our community. And then last but not least, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And that's it for me.
Councilmember Cleveland.
Thank you very much. I attended Mosquito Vector Meeting, dealing with those little things that tend to pester us. There's so many different kinds of them, people don't realize that some don't mind the cold, some don't like it, and so there's different sizes that come out, come out at different times of the year. And so dealing with that and learning over the time how, how to deal with it and working with the state on that, we had a special meeting for making a turn, new attorney selection, and they are in the room getting an education, or at least familiarizing themselves with the location, and we thank them for doing this transition. Salvation Kettle Kickoff, definitely enjoyed that with all of the poor air quality and everybody helping out. It was a little light this time on attendance, but I know that when it comes time to start ringing the bells and collecting the money, that the community will again step up this year and help out even, even more than what they have in the past, seeing what benefit Salvation Army has been during this time of evacuation. Also attended LAFCO meeting, and I've also been behind the scenes quietly cooking food and bringing it to the, down to the fairgrounds, and then also instructing people that want to do it, who to go to, how to get it done. Having been in the restaurant business years past and operating large restaurant kitchens, I kind of just give guidance and try to be just, help people do it themselves, but help them not make mistakes in producing large amounts of food. And not overproducing and putting twice as much, and then having most of it thrown away, because 24 hours later, by law, they have to throw it away. So trying to keep people from getting overzealous. And other than that, I'm done.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harris.
I actually have a negative report, with the exception of the, also attended the meeting, we all did, to appoint our new city attorney. Welcome, sir. Good to have you here. Everything else, I was either out of town for a week, or meetings and whatnot were canceled due to the heavy amount of smoke in the air. So that's it for me.
And for me, same thing with the campfire and helping the evacuees. When I first got the news, I have to say thank you to my office, who put us on administrative time off to come and help our community. So I've been here, helping at those shelters. I actually brought in a family into my own home for the first day until we located their family. So my heart just aches to see these folks. So doing whatever I can, going to shelter, it's interesting, because, you know, you, you're an elected official, and so people want to come and talk to you. And, and I, I really just told them, you know, I, I'm just here to help in, in whatever way that I can. This is not about being elected, this is about just being a human and just helping. So it was really important to be out there. My daughter's home from college, so the first thing she wanted to do is go out there and help in whatever way that she can. So I just want to say thank you to our community and all of the, the surrounding regions that have really stepped up, talk about care and compassion that, no matter what, I, I strongly believe and will always believe there is more good than there is bad. And that's what we're gonna lean on, and we're gonna help Butte County build, and we're gonna keep them strong. So thank you, and God bless every single person. So with that, I also want to end tonight in the memory of Mike Fitzgerald and Liv Harrison. Meeting adjourned.